Fudge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dave can't make it tonight. He's covering for somebody at work. We have our form. Call me need an order. We're going to start with Eva Dirk's presentation.
Hi there. That was quick. I didn't expect to get up so soon. So that's okay. So how's everybody doing this evening?
Good.
Well, I can do interjections again, but I think you all know who I am by now because I've been here a few times. So again, Dirk Gary with IMPA. Thanks for having me this evening. I think you're aware of what we're going to be discussing tonight on this little contract extension request presentation. But I'll go ahead and hand these out and we'll just go ahead and dig in if that's okay. All right.
It's originally the 40 year, wasn't it?
Uh, I mean, your original or way back when?
Well, originally, I think 2011, they signed a 40-year contract.
Let's see. Your current one is out till 2042. So currently you're sitting with 22 years. So whatever your original date was, possibly there was another extension in there in between. If you go all the way back to the founders of the park back in 82, they signed a 50-year. So yeah, nobody's in a 50-year since, as I'm aware of, there's been 30 years and some additional extensions.
So we've just been modifying since originally?
Pretty much, yeah. And that's, this is another modification, but they're all kind of digging into the meat and potatoes. And I've explained why we think this one's going to stick a little bit longer. So let's see.
So you guys trying to do some financing now?
I want your phone. Oh, go ahead and take those. I've got one more I'll use. All right. What's your question again?
Are you guys trying to do some financing in the future here or what else?
Yeah, that's really what we're getting down to. And the reason for this is, is it comes down to financing and bonding. And we have to have everybody in this together because, you know, mandates are coming. We don't know what mandates are going to be coming in place yet from the Fed, but I'm sure everybody here feels the same way. We really don't know what's coming with this administration. We've got some guesses. But you know, we've, we've heard buzzwords in the past, Green New Deal, but you know, that's pretty heavy. But nonetheless, whatever comes down the pipeline, have to be ready for it. So that's really what we're going to get into. But your little handy dandy packet here, I've got some fun stuff for you, especially if you need help getting to sleep at night. So or if you just want to learn more about IMPA, here on your left-hand side, we've got a nice little infographic just talking about the agency, the members that we have. We have 61 members, six in Indiana, one in Ohio. So really what I want to kind of reiterate here is that in Indiana, there's probably a few hundred municipalities, but only 72 are like Rockville and have an electric utility. So that's a big deal. There's only a few that have those. And to put that perspective of the 72, 60, they were part of IMPA. So it's, we have the majority by far and we intend to kind of grow with that as well. So really IMPA is strength in numbers because we're a nonprofit joint action agency. So we operate at cost. So really the more members that are in this, the better that our members are doing, the better the agency does. And it kind of is a circular way of looking into that with costs and everything. So also have the annual report, little information packet there, you know, finances, everything's open book being not for profit. So that's really where if you really want to, you know, you need help with night sleeping, there you go. So this over here, we've got the presentation I'll go through. I'll keep it fairly casual. I'll try not to drone on and off of these points. So if you guys have questions or want to interject at any time, feel free to. But we'll, we'll go through all that. Last thing real quick, rate comparison sheet. This may be more adventurous for Randy to have, just to compare your rates with the others. You can compare yourself with other IMPA members in your competition to kind of see where you're at as far as residential, commercial, industrial. You guys aren't too far off everybody else, but this is really what a lot of folks like to share because how many times, I'm sure Randy, you probably experienced this too. People come in and complain about the bill and maybe they're on something outside town, whether it's Duke or RNC, not to pick on anybody. They all say, hey, we're cheaper. Well, it's not apples to apples because they're, they're getting just the electric bill. But you know, Rockville, you probably got water, sewer, you might have storm, you got electric. You have trash too? No? Okay. Well, some towns have trash. And it's like, well, why is it so much higher? It's like, you're paying for more. You get a lot more. So it's just kind of something handy to have. So we'll just jump right on here. And again, we'll kind of keep this casual. So if you've got any questions, you can hoop and holler and I'll answer them the best I can, but I'm just going to start right into it. So very talked a little bit, Park, with your question about the original contracts and where we stand at now. So your current contract is a year 2042. So you have, what was that, 20, yeah, 21 years left. Yeah. I'm, I'm used to doing this in 2020. So I always say you have 22, but you got 21. So your termination notice on the current contract is a 10-year notice. And so we'll get to the portion of this with the extension. But if you kind of put things in perspective, you're talking about, you know, back when Rockville joined on and the originals back in 82, they signed a 50-year. Big differences now with these 20-year contracts we currently have in place with our members. We have $2 billion in assets, which we kind of have outlined in this infographic. But when IMPA was founded back in 82, everything was purchased on the market. It was the strength in numbers. There was about a dozen communities, municipalities that came together and said, hey, you know, we're kind of getting kicked around. We're buying a block of power here, a block of power there, you know, and we're kind of getting, you know, the wool pulled over our eyes and we want to be stronger. So they came together and got in the market and got aggressive and it paid off very well to where again grew from about a dozen to 61 currently. And now we actually have ownership of different generation facilities. So Rockville, along with the other 60 members, has stake, so to speak, in these generation sites. And that ranges from coal to natural gas to solar, all these things. So it's come quite a ways. It's a great organization. But with that, we mentioned the mandates, change in economic and environmental concerns. So really this comes down to financing, bonding and revamping that portfolio. So IMPA rates here on slide three, just a real quick little historical data review. IMPA again, not-for-profit, we operate at cost. We also operate under the direction of our commissioners, which acts as the board of directors. Comparison there is if you look at like Duke or investor-owned utility of that nature, they have a board of directors, but that's whoever has the most shares, right? They have stock and things in that. So the shareholders are calling the shots and they're trying to get a profit. IMPA being a not-for-profit, the way we're structured is that all member communities are essentially created equal. Rockville has a vote, just like Crawfordsville has a vote, Darlington, New Ross, all the way to Anderson, Richmond, folks all around the state, from Columbia City down to Tell City, all are created the same. They all have a vote. So your commissioner being Steve Farrington, if Rockville's unhappy with something on the wholesale power side or just how IMPA is operating in general, Steve can come to a meeting and voice Rockville's, you know, protest opinion, whatever it may be, and he can get other folks to rally with that. And really Steve and the rest of the commissioners are my boss's boss. So we report to the CEO, but the CEO reports to the commissioners. So that's quite a bit more pull than what you get with, say, buying from Duke outright and kind of being on your own. So you kind of have some say in that. But with that in mind, if we keep rates low, we will. If you look back to 2017, even after the pandemic, we have an average decrease of 2.1%, which is unheard of in the energy sector or the utility world really right now. I'm sure you've seen the news, a lot of stuff's going up just because of the pandemic and things are changing. So we've been able to keep things low and if we can, that's what we aim to do. Which also funds back for that is the commissioners get a vote on that. So our staff does the research on that and bring the suggestion before the board of commissioners and they get the vote later in the year on what to do with rates for the following year. So all the member communities are a part of that as well. So. And just to kind of reiterate that, here's the illustration, talk on the historical side. How are you, Troy? Have you heard this one yet? You going to be starting over for it yet?
No.
Anyhow, you can see IMPA here with a solid black trend line, just a comparison. You can see Vectren, pretty doggone high. Nisco also is pretty high. You can see other competition with Duke and IPNL. But you can see how there's a general trend over the years that everybody's going up because things are going to get more expensive. You know, everything's going up all the time. I know rates are going up, but if we can lower those, we do. So just to put a little bit of illustration behind that. Moving on here to slide five. This is a real quick one. Really what this comes down to, this is like a political study done, an analysis really. And it doesn't matter if the parties were blue or red. It was more so the question of aggression. So it's not if renewables or alternative energy resources are going to be a part of the future, it's more so when. Everybody's taking a different approach and going towards that direction because they agree that that's the solution. But really that comes down to, okay, how fast are we going to get there? What's it going to cost and who's paying for it? Like to tell you who's paying for it is folks like you and me to go home and turn the lights on and we pay for our meter spending. So we have to keep those in perspective for our members. So again, it's not a question of if, it's when. Political wins, kind of already mentioned this, really, you know, talk about that buzzword, Green New Deal, different carbon tax proposals. Really, we're looking to see what the future mandates are going to be coming down the pipeline. We have to be ready for those. We don't want to wait until the last minute because if the demand for new technology and energy resources skyrockets, that affects our rates, which then affects our member communities and then your rate vote as well. So we don't want to do that. Want to keep things affordable. So we have to plan for the future and move accordingly. Does that make sense? And I'm talking pretty quick, so if anything sticks out, you can flag me down. So compliance costs, here in this little theoretical chart, I put a heavy emphasis on theoretical. Because I know this is a sharp upward trend. This can be scary. Really what this is driving home is that the more aggressive somebody gets with eliminating CO2, the cost can go up. But at IMPA, we've done very well, particularly with solar. We've actually kind of changed everything with that. We're adding more solar as much as we can to member communities. And we've actually made it to where it makes better financial sense. Years ago, when solar came out, the technology, the efficiency of the panels, cost of construction, all of these costs affiliated with startup, it didn't make good financial sense. Now it actually does. It makes good sense. It's affordable. It's efficient. It's good for our membership. But this really is driving home the fact that, you know, we can get really aggressive and eliminate all the CO2, but if the technology and the cost don't make sense, we have to look at how to best do that without breaking the bank. So resource and fuel mix here on slide eight, I mentioned that we are primarily coal. We have a mix of things, coal, natural gas. You can see we're up 66.2% on coal and renewables here on the solar side, we just got about 7%. So they're adding to that every day. That number changes every day. But we're just like Duke and everybody else, still primarily coal. We have one of the cleanest burning coal plants in the country at Prairie State. That one is going to be around for quite a while. It's probably the last one to be built. I'd be surprised if not. It's got every environmental bell and whistle known to man. It was also a smart move for IMPA to jump on that one because it was built on top of a coal mine reserve. So when that property was purchased and that site was constructed, the, the fuel was already purchased too at that price back then, when it was constructed, early, early 2000s. So as coal prices fluctuated for everybody else, having to bring them in on truck or rail car, you don't have to at Prairie State. They own it. They actually mine it 250 feet under the ground and convey it across and they'll have it from the bottom oh, in about six hours over in the burner. So it saves a tremendous amount of money, which again impacts rates. So state of current generation, generation facilities, it's kind of like a pickup truck or a piece of machinery. I mean, you're going to invest in it, you're going to pay on it, but it's going to get wear and tear over time. And eventually you're going to have to retire it, right? You got to upgrade to the next thing. So these are all things we have to keep in mind also with compliance costs. Just an example here, our Gibson unit, Gibson five, it's slated to retire in May of 2026. So not too far away in five years. So if we're going to be retiring certain things and we have all of this factored in for kind of the end of life cost, you have to think about how you're going to replace that load, right? And you also have to add for growth because the communities, they're not even going to be smaller. They're going to keep growing. Demand is going to keep growing. So well, that's A though, right? We're going to go with that. Yeah. That, well, we're going to, we'll help you if you can. But that's the goal is that your communities are going to grow and you're going to have to replace that load. So if you're going to retire that unit, we're, we're going to get that energy, right? So keep those things in mind as well. It requires long-term planning. And even with contracts where we purchase from market, we can talk here about we have 18.7% nuclear. We don't actually own the nuclear, but we have a contract where we purchase from a nuclear facility. So if these contracts are going to end in 2034, so what do we do after that? Again, want to replace that load and keep moving forward. I know I'm bringing a lot of information to you and everybody's kind of looking around, but we could take questions at the end too if you like. So jumping here, an ideal portfolio, I like to talk about this infographic a lot more than the, the theoretical one that had that real sharp upward trend, you know, the compliance costs. These numbers have been ran to achievable. So we can have a reduction of 50% on CO2 by 2030. For them, 25% at 2040 and zero or near zero by 2050. So it's, it's long-term planning, but you know, in reality, in the energy industry, these aren't too far away. So these are all things we have to think about for the future. But again, these numbers have been ran to where this isn't too aggressive and it's not going to have a severe impact on our members' rates, which is really what we want to do. We want to have low-cost, reliable and environmentally responsible power. So that's what we aim to do. I can see you've been on slide 12 for a little bit, which is a good place to kind of talk about what's everybody else doing on the aggression level. You can see here, Nisco, pretty aggressive, looking at 100% closing of coal by 2028 and then adding 100% renewables between 2025 and 28. It's, that's great, but it's also very, very aggressive. And again, who pays for that? It's the rate payers are going to pay for that. So the folks that are sitting there at the office saying, hey, we're going to do this and get compliance. That's all good, but everybody home is paying for it. We have to keep that in mind with the member communities because they're going to say, hey, you know, this is great. We want to be 100% too, but we can't go this fast because it's too expensive. It doesn't make good sense. So everybody's doing something right now, but everybody's just taking a different approach. And so you know what we're going to be talking about, the amendment to the contract, which has an extension in it. And you're probably wondering, you know, is anybody else doing this? Yes, they are. Who's your energy? They're requesting an extension till 2055, while by chavating, 2060. So our extension request is going to be an eight-year extension request. So you're at 42, eight years takes it to 2050. So we're right in line with everybody else. Everybody's on the same track. Reason for that is we kind of talked about a little bit of Park's first question about bonding. Takes long-term planning. If we want to look at triple county or even Prairie State, they're coal units, but they take a great deal of time. A lot of things that are large scale, especially on the transmission side, large-scale solar parks and everything. It takes a lot of forward thinking, a lot of planning and engineering. And then finally, you're going to have construction and startups. So you have to finance a project that can take, you know, a few years to several years. You know, you're actually going to be able to turn the switch on, generate electricity and then sell it and get a return on your investment. So we have to have proper financing in order for that. That makes sense? So long-term financing, I'm sure you all are very familiar with the mortgage example, 30 years versus 10 years. 10 years is great because you can pay it off quick or quicker, but than the 30-year that is, but then the 30-years is going to have a lower payment. So the reason we want to use this example is, yeah, it's great if we get things paid off real quick, but the cost of those payments is going to be a lot higher. And again, since we operate at cost, that trickles on to our rates, to member communities. So the first 10 years of folks in the member communities, they, they can pay things off, but you're going to have that sharp spike, then a plateau and then nothing for how long? Where if you do it over 30 years, it's that slow gradual trend. It's a lot more palpable to folks. It's a lot less hard on folks and it makes sense. So again, I know I've given you guys a lot, but here just to kind of get close to wrapping up, we talked about your current contract is out till 2042. Your current termination notice is a 10-year notice. And what that means is by the year 2032, if you say, hey, IMPA, you know, we think we're done, we want to look around, go somewhere else, you can give notice in 2032. You can't give notice prior to that. So if you're 2029 on your current contract, if you say, hey, we're out, you can't do anything with that, you got to wait till 32. If you hang on till the year 2035, you can give a 10-year notice, then you would be out in 2045. So with the extension request, the eight-year extension is going to take it from 42 and take it to the year 2050. It's also got a request to change the termination notice. So Park, this kind of goes down to why there's a difference in this amendment versus the ones in the past. This 30-year extension, or sorry, extension, 30-year termination notice, I got to be clear about that. It's an eight-year extension with a change of the termination notice of 30 years. It acts as a 30-year moving window. The reason for that is they don't have to keep coming back over and over and over again, all 61 communities or however many it is at that time, to join in on saving the financing. So this kind of makes things a lot easier. It gives communities flexibility as well because they can kind of plan ahead like, okay, this isn't going the way we want based on our historical data. We want to do something else and plan for the future. So really this helps out everybody on the financing side. So and it comes down to bond and bonding and better interest rates. So kind of wrap up here. A lot of information for you guys on IMPA and the history there. But the request is for an eight-year extension with a modification on the termination notice to 30 years. Any questions on that? You guys are pretty quiet for everything, so.
So if the response were that we're okay extending for eight years, but we want the 10-year notification, is that something that EMFA is not going to sign?
So just make sure I answer you correctly. You're saying you're okay with an eight-year extension, but questioning if you could do a 10-year instead of a 30-year?
The 30-year notice is more so what would I find concerning as far as.
That's understandable. So I'm not the attorney, but as far as what my understanding is with our past discussions is that all contracts are the same for every member community. So all of them are going to be eight years and all of them are going to be a 30-year termination notice. I don't believe they will switch to a 10-year.
Not really asking, they're telling us that's what if we want a contract.
Well, if you want to get more specific, the commissioners are saying they want this. The commissioners voted on this and then they voted in to go to everybody else. So no, I'm not telling you. I'm asking. You can, you can say no.
Right now, we're at 30-year term. We do the eight, we're at 30-year. We have to say right now, we want out for 30 years. But that's rolling. Every year you can say, okay, we want out for 30 years.
You can, and then you kind of have that.
30 years was 2020, so we're beyond that.
Well, it goes to 2051.
Yeah, that's correct. So yeah, let's, let's play with the hypothetical. Let's do that. So if, let's just say hypothetically, you signed right now and you went on with an eight-year addition, taking it to 2050. Since we're actually past 2020 and it's 2021, right? So let's say you sign now and say, hey, we're going to do the eight-year extension and then, but we want out. It's going to be 30 years from now. So it would be 2051, you would be out. That is correct. And if you, every day that you, or every year, you see, you make, well technically every day, but every year too that you don't, it just keeps rolling over. Everybody's just kind of moving together in this big window to help with the financing.
I, I don't know where in town should I find a better deal?
I was just asking, sorry.
Well, it's a good question. I was, I was thinking it.
No, here's the thing. It's a good question. And yes, this is a request this evening, but I do not intend on anybody voting on this tonight. I figure you're going to take this, you're going to call me with questions. I'm, I'm supposing you're, you're the attorney? You ask questions like once. What's your name?
Nick Sard.
Nick, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you too. Sorry for the pointed question.
No, no, that's okay. I'm glad you do because what we'll do is if you have questions like that, I can have you talk to Peter. He, he's the expert on that. That's my job is to point you to the right guy.
We've been emailing back and forth on some of your stuff, so.
Okay. Oh, you guys talk about the ISC contract too. Well, everything is, I'll make sure, these are two totally separate ones. Okay, good. Cause we get some folks who get confused. I showed up to one meeting and we talked, we had all these things going on. And then they brought up AMI meters. I was like, no, 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 we're going to have too many agreements out of the table. So. But yeah, in the power industry, 30 years, I mean, you know, as far as, you know, business owner, things like that, small business, 30 years is a long time. You know, I feel like 30 years is a long time on my house with a mortgage. But in the power industry, it's pretty commonplace. You can see everybody else is kind of doing this along these same lines too. And again, I want to put out there that out of 72, 60 are with IMPA. And the reason for that is you get that voice compared to like Duke or these other folks. If you want to go buy a block of power and go out there, you know, unfortunately municipalities are kind of a, a small fish in a big pond. I hate to say that, but because everybody kind of comes together and has swarmed, they're a lot stronger. So it pays off a lot better that way. But again, it is a request, but it's up to you guys what you want to do. Table that. We can come back and answer any questions you have in the meantime. So I know it was a lot, but yeah. Anything else before I run on out of here? Anything I can help you with? Not for you? Okay. Okay. Well, I appreciate your time. Nick, I'm going to give you my card. You've got one on you too?
No, I don't, but Peter has it. He knows I get a whole.
Good deal. If you need anything, you let me know. So. Thank you. Yeah, all of the words I got. So if you need anything else, give me a holler and thank you again for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Have a good one.
That's a lot. Interesting. But yeah, seriously, I go where you go.
Some of the charts that they had, I felt were pretty telling as far as their comparisons to other utilities terms of rates. And I also like the fact that they're not being hugely aggressive in their transition to renewables.
Trying to make this painful as possible.
It's kind of moderate. And again, it's, it's kind of hard to tell what's going to happen in the future with those regulations. But I think moderation is a good point. Impressive.
Now, I, I hear folks hear about 30-year thing.
I was thinking the same thing. I don't care about an extension, but I mean, that's just perpetually locking you into it with them.
Yeah, well, I guess one year say we're one out. I don't know why you buy it would, but you're going to go. Beyond my skill, that one is for sure. What are we going to beat this for? Do you want to take the research today or what are you folks? Now, I don't know. There's much to talk about as far as.
The email I received indicated pretty much is a ticket or a new year kind of deal.
Right.
This is what they're having all of their communities do. You're either doing it or you're not doing it in business.
So I don't know. We need to, I'm going to wait, wait, vote now. I don't seem to need to prolong the discussion.
Would you say that's a motion?
I shall make that motion.
I'll second. Everybody in favor?
There, Nick, don't worry.
With reservations regarding a 30-year term.
I just wanted to point it out so it seemed like I did something.
There you go, Nick. Give your button.
Did you print that email? I just sent you the attachments?
Yeah, I was looking at that when we decided on making a motion.
Yes, we did and approved for, for the extension.
In those kind of negotiations, we don't have a whole lot of leverage.
Yes, sir. We're a small fish.
Ready to move on to police report?
We should have a written copy of mine before the USDA grant. Haven't gotten any updates on it. I know Randy had to give him some updated paperwork or something last week, but I left a message for him. He didn't call me back, haven't emailed me or anything. So I don't have an update on where we're at. I was going to, somebody told me that it would be possible for us to change vehicles in that grant. And so I got information on the 2020s, but they're all brand new, the Dodge Durango's, which are pursuit rated and all wheel drive. So we might look ending from the top who's doing that.
Why would we want to do that?
Because it's less and we do have some, some equipment that we didn't get on there that can be changed back into it. Like I said before, that the vehicles that we have quoted are a special service vehicle. They're not pursuit rated. But I felt like the four-wheel drive was more important. But if we can get these cheaper and get both, then it might be an option. But I haven't heard back from you, so.
And that may be why he, I mean, I know he's working on the paperwork that I sent him back. And then the whole advertisement in the paper was just to meet the criteria of the days and USDA had an issue with that. So that's why, that's why I went back in and had it put back in the paper. So we do meet that 10-day criteria and he, Mr. McGee's already been forward of that documentation to show that. Just so that if there was anybody tonight that wouldn't make any comment, it was in the paper as advertised, so.
So it was advertised for tonight's meeting, you get in there?
Yeah, it had to because of the, it was only in the nine-day frame the last time. So no, no big deal. But Mr. McGee just asked me to throw that back through there so that we would be compliant with USDA requirements. So that doesn't change anything as far as your vehicles.
No, no. The UPT Uniform Traffic Ticket List for the clerk saw nothing new since we've had change in office holders at the courthouse. So I don't have an update on that one. But I do have two years worth of citations printed out that we haven't been paying for. The new radios, like I said, have been in and issued. We've had a few problems to have the motorola tweak force. And we're still working on those. But I believe the Indiana Criminal Justice Institute sent the final paperwork that Randy and I both had to sign. And if it's been sent back to us, I think they're closer to being able to reimburse us so that we can, I just want to submit that bill to you for a claim. The CHIRP grant, which is the Comprehensive Highway Injury Reduction Program grant, which is the Operation Pullover stuff that we do every year. The Criminal Justice Institute is now requiring us to do it, to join a traffic safety partnership with Clinton Police Department. And Clinton Police Department taking care of the paperwork. Essentially will not change anything, but it's, I guess for them, their benefit, it shows that they're making partnerships throughout the state. But since we're a small agency and Clinton's a small agency, they're putting us, lumping us into one. The monthly statistical reports are here for you to look at. And with that CHIRP, the Blitz 107 just completed. They ran from February 26th to March 21st. It resulted in two criminal arrests, 19 traffic citations and. It resulted in two criminal arrests, nineteen traffic citations, and I'm thinking it was around forty five warnings issued. Blitz one away, which is the stop on violation enforcement, has now started. And we'll also have at least two officers participate in the nationwide enforcement effort on April eighth, turning distracted driving the new hands for you all. I did apply for the the same grant, which is separate from this, but it's just additional funding. And that has been approved by the Indiana Criminal Justice Institute. Ian's car was leaking water around the roof during the torrential downpours and.
It was raining.
It's two thousand thirteen and four. But he probably needed a shower anyway. Cameron Martin and Chris Fisher will be attending drug recognition expert training at the end of the month. It's a free training put on by the Criminal Justice Institute. It will make them drug recognition experts and through a series of tests and evaluations of a person, they can determine what type of drug they're on and testify to that in court. The Criminal Justice Institute pays for all that. They'll spend one week in Indianapolis, Lawrence area for classroom training. And then the Criminal Justice Institute will fly them to Fort Lauderdale, Florida, where they'll spend a week doing practical exercises on homeless folks that are drug addicted and figuring out what they're, what kind of drugs they're on. So that's their, it's all paid for by Criminal Justice Institute. Now, if an officer calls for a drug recognition expert and then one of those guys gets called out, then Criminal Justice Institute pays them time and a half to go respond to that. So having two of them will help us because only one of them is ever scheduled to work at one time and the off duty guy can go take care of the complaint. Park County Local Coordinating Council for Drug and Alcohol Free Park County just provided a seventeen hundred and sixty dollar grant for tobacco retailer enforcement, which will allow officers to do enforcement checks on retailers to make sure they're checking IDs and not selling to underage kids. And that came about when the schools are having such a problem with vaping and tobacco products. I know somebody talked to you about the police department roof last time about to leak him. It's still leaking. We've had arrangements for the last couple of years and the guy that was gonna do it for free has just been too busy and not been able to get to it. So.
Are we concerned maybe about mold or anything?
Absolutely. The carpet is is soaked in that one room and the drop down ceiling is all gone out of there. We've got vent hanging out of the ceiling in that one room.
So is it a, isn't it, I kept visualizing it, flat?
It's a flat roof. So what we were putting on it was an angled roof on top of it and so that we wouldn't have that problem anymore. And it was gonna go up to the back roof of what would be the water garage, where the water trucks parked.
Should we park the water trucks in?
Well, how much is it gonna cost to do it?
I don't know. So I'm gonna get some estimates.
We're basically talking a header board on the existence of the water building and you're gonna basically run some.
New trusses up there, yeah.
I mean, it's not even a full truck. It'll be kind of a parcel truck.
Yes.
Yeah.
Correct. So I'll get some bids and see what we can find out.
We can do city metal.
It was just in that one room, yes, putting metal roof on it. And it was just that one room that was leaking. Now it's coming all the way down the wall. So I'll get those bids for you for next meeting. And then finally, did Rockville officers chipped in to sponsor the Park Heritage Wolf Semi State Basketball and Waxy Radio? So we all chipped in a hundred and sixty nine dollars to pay for that. So when you heard that on the thing, I want to make sure that nobody thought the town was paying for that. And that's my report.
Before we move on, a couple of weeks ago, wasn't there some question about dumpsters in town or something? And I can't remember the exact conversation.
Yeah, they're not supposed to be.
They're not supposed to be. That's hilarious. Well, I just saw one today and it jogged my memory. I thought we just talked about this.
Was it a Jax or a Wallace?
This is a Wallace.
They can be there for short term, right?
Yeah, but I'll, yes, yeah.
Like a seven day or something? We have ordinance about it.
Yeah, there is an ordinance.
But we can't, we can't find the one that you guys think you passed.
Signed.
Or did pass. Because the one that we do have.
I think it is.
Mentions that it's still talking about metal trash cans and.
Oh, no.
Well, we can do another ordinance if we need it. But I know we did one because we didn't want them, well, they started popping up and it's just not a good thing to have in the residential area.
It also talked about placement. Where they should be placed.
And it has to be fenced in with.
Well, that's, well, yeah, there's that issue too. We're talking residential here, not any commercial aspect of, yeah, they have to be contained in commercial.
Yeah, I would think you might want to, they capture the future kind of issues.
Do you have that one, Randy? Do you know?
I was thinking that we found something because we thought it was thirty days. I've had a couple of issues with a couple of complaints.
Can you bring it to the, or have it ready for the next meeting?
Yeah.
I know it also talked about being placed in the alley behind the house, but when that was passed, I know Kelly Price was on the board and but we had complained about.
Because it is, it was on the street. It was still there, not.
But the problem is in that situation, I, who am I saying, Deborah, who was also on the board. But her property, it's on the side of the property because the rear of her property at the alley is his rental house. It's not his anymore. But so it was placed at the back, the rear of her property.
It wasn't. It's not got a surround, does it? Isn't it just parked on the street?
I think it does now. I'll have to check it again, but at that time, it couldn't go in the alley because then it would be on the other side of his house.
Well, hey, just talking to you.
So you want me to look into ordinance on that or are we waiting to look in and see if we have a copy of what please?
Sometime between now and our next meeting, let's get the print of this here, chief, and please.
Okay. I know I didn't draft one, so we're free now.
No, it was before you. I'll look and see what we have and send it to you also.
Probably fourteen or fifteen.
And if you have anything you'd like to see added, send it to me too, if you would.
Will do. I I do have starting spring inspections. We'll be starting this month and I'm also working on getting the cameras up.
No, where are they better get them placed?
There's there's some here at at the town hall and there's some at the park and down at the depot.
And some by the water place where they get the water, right?
Well, there's already some down there, but they're on the firehouse and they're on our place, but they don't cover it well enough. But these systems, we don't have a separate system for that.
Yeah.
It also look up possible.
So the, who's doing that? Who's putting them up?
I am. Myself and the electric company, because they have to put new outlets at some places, like in the park. So they're up high enough that people can't mess with them.
Okay. Because it said people are taking stuff from the dog park now and.
The dog park will probably not be covered.
Won't be in it?
No, because the wifi connection for that is in the pool house. So about as far as we can go is to the pavilion in the park. Now, it'll look over that area, but it's not gonna be, it's not gonna be being dim or anything.
The bags. I do know the bags disappear constantly.
And sometimes it'll look like they're not in there, but they get pushed down inside. That's what Pamela tells me, but she also tells me.
I'm sure kids aren't down there just.
Everybody wants one of those, don't they?
Oh, absolutely. It's so handy.
And then use them for trash can bags.
I figured. Check your office.
I don't think they're that big.
Some of them are. They have the ones replaced, the big one in.
Those are for St. Bernard's, right?
Yes. There are a couple of them down in the park, too.
Okay, you ready, Jeff?
Yep. I've number one was brought to me by Water Department and they had some concerns on our bulk water rates. Currently, I think it's point zero 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 three. Zero 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 three seven five per gallon. And I have an email here from Mandy. And she says, she has the the cost for the month in the billing. Says, since beginning time, we've sub totaled all the loads and charged them the point zero zero three seven five per gallon. And for totals under a thousand gallons, we only charge a total of four dollars and one cent per load. That's not very much. It's very cheap. Minimum water charge for our customers is twenty five hundred gallons and it is billed at twenty two eighty, which is a marked difference. She asked that, and her, and Koya asked, we'd come up with something, maybe raise these rates or come up with a different system. And I looked at our water audit data and yet the point four three seven five doesn't even cover our production costs, which would be about point oh six seven, I think, or roughly point zero zero seven would cover our production costs.
We didn't talk about the water audit meeting you had.
No, no. Did I, did you get a copy?
Oh, yes, I, wow.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's depressing.
It is. Losing a lot of water somewhere that you just can't account for. So. Anyway, I wanted to throw that to you guys as far as.
Well, what's your recommendation? I mean, where do you want to go with the rate for bulk?
About zero whatever, however many point seven five that covers our production cost and gives us a little bit of something. I mean, I've heard, I've heard some of the people that I work with that they drive from all over to get our water.
They do. They do. And another thing, if you look at these spreadsheets or the billing, we have customers outside the town that fill up, you know, eleven times for, ten times for four bucks. That's forty bucks. Well, residents' water bill for, you know, twenty five hundred gallons is, you know, twenty two eighty or twenty fifty, whatever it is. So there's a little bit of discrepancy there and.
We are metering. Well, we 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 put a meter down.
Yes, yeah. So so that's helped on our water loss quite a bit. But now it's just being able to come up with a number that's gonna more closely reflect our production costs.
Well, come back with what you want to raise it to. If you have that number now, we'll litigate as a suggestion.
I can come up with.
Well, like I said, let let me go back and I want to make sure I get the the precise number, but I think it's gonna be around point oh oh seven to cover production costs. Your your memory might be better than mine. No. But but that's a, that would be a ballpark recommendation. Let let me get the final numbers together before we do anything, just so we're accurate. Okay? But I did want to bring that up to you.
Bring it back because we need to do it. We've talked about this several times.
Yep. Department of Corrections in the county jail, we did meet. I think I sent sent you an update on that. Sheriff Justin Cole, Commissioner Jim Eas, Assistant Attorney Pam Ferguson, and DOC Construction Services Director Kevin Horn, and Chief Maintenance at the prison Kurt Singer, Kyle Kurt Singer. I gotta tell you, folks, the the meeting went really, really well as far as I was concerned. All parties were very supportive of our needs and they know that that's an issue. Kevin Horn says, you know, he's dealt with several of these issues throughout the Department of Corrections throughout the state. And so this is not his first radio on it. And the one thing that they had a CPA there, I'm trying to think, a guy's named Tom something or other, and he approached, or he threw out the idea of maybe a long term contract to help depreciate depreciation costs and also tie in, lock in some rates. I'll be curious to see what what they're willing to do. And we'll have to look at it.
Well, we want to be careful there.
Yeah.
Lock any rates.
Yeah.
That is, yeah.
Yeah. But I I think in the long run, it might be okay because it does allow for changes in what they're willing to help us pay for. So like I said, I'll I'll be interested to see what they get. And I've got some sample contracts that they have with other municipalities.
Yeah.
And I'll share those with you and Nick also, just so you can get eyeballs on it. I also talked to a lady with the city of Realsville and and she is negotiating with with the state on some of the long term stuff too. So I just wanted to let you know and keep you appraised with that. And I'll keep you informed. Surplus utility poles, I bring this up every once in a while too, because I get people to call and say, hey, can I buy a old wrecked utility pole off of you? Do we want to do that? Do we not want to do that?
Well, what are they doing with it? Yeah, what are they gonna do with it?
Yeah, I think if I make fence posts and stuff like that.
If we try to construct a building and it snaps in two, then they may come back. Nick, what would you say?
Maybe easily put together some type of waiver, one of the building form, from your son.
How many do we have?
We've got several sections. We do a lot of pole changes anymore.
Yeah, put those something together, Nick. Keeps us off.
Get rid of, get them out of there.
Keeps us out of court.
We're not using them anymore.
They want to buy them.
Yeah.
They want to buy them, so.
He said in the past, what they used to do is they'd take them down to the, they'd chop them up, take them down to the sale barn and just put them in a lot in auction. That may be a clean way to do it. I don't know. It's surplus material. I don't know if you have to get bids on it or that kind of stuff, so.
How much is that tip?
Yeah, I I don't know. I don't have any idea what they're even selling for.
Threshold of how much it's worth, kind of thing.
Is it five thousand?
I can't imagine it with that. I don't remember what that number is, but.
Solar agreement data, this is more something for Nick and you guys too. Trying to put together information for solar contractors. Keep reaching out to me on, you know, what are policies are gonna be and that kind of thing. We have a sample ordinance from input that we probably need to put in place.
I thought it was a place.
I don't know if we ever voted on it.
You came up with something for the one person that had requested.
Well, I know they brought out a policy or they brought out something a couple of years ago. I thought we passed it. I mean, isn't that the ordinance?
As far as solar and wind, there's a moratorium in the county on developing that for commercial purposes. But he doesn't necessarily say that as far as residential.
Residential is what we're primarily looking at. And some of the data is, you know, how much liability do you require the homeowner to carry?
Well, does if I have a sample contract, this is.
Yeah, but they have the the sample ordinance and the sample user agreement, which we've looked at before. But some of the specifics in in those need to be filled out. For example, the liability amounts, what's the maximum size of the system that we can put in there? I've got as much data as I can get in talking to our guys in MPa, but some of those are choices the board's gonna have to make or recommendations for the town council, town councillor regarding.
Yeah, well, should we have that that knowledge? Well, we, well, I guess I have to look at and see.
Hey, I can always come up with numbers.
Well, yeah.
One second. I'll get with you on that and we'll put our heads together and see if we can't get a sample ordinance together.
I think we're gonna have to get to get on the MPa agreement anyway, so we can do that at once.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you, sir. Let's see, from wastewater treatment plant, need to do some testing on our generator. Annual expense is about twenty five hundred dollars to do that. Bill recommends we also do load testing on the generators. He's noticing that when they come under load, they're not fully energizing everything that needs to be energized. The load testing would be an extra twenty nine sixty eight for those generators. Bringing the total for all the testing to be five thousand four sixty eight.
I'm guessing that hasn't been done in forever.
He says it's been a while. It's time it is done again. So if you would like to approve a motion for that.
Oh, I'll move.
One second. Call the paper.
Aye.
Forget to sign the check and it'll come back.
Okay. Bill reports that the UV repairs we did, the UV, the E coli testing is outstanding. It's down to like one as opposed to thirteen. So the repairs that they made with the the new bulbs and everything is working well. However, they did find two bulbs that they think need ballast replaced and also a couple sleeves need to be replaced. sleeves need to be replaced. And the parts for that will be seventeen thirty-five. But Bill did say if we need to push that off to the future, we can, but as far as I'm concerned, I'd rather have them on hand so that when the gentleman is back this way, they can go ahead and do the repairs. Just my suggestion.
Well, I agree.
I make a motion, we approve. On paper.
Thank you. We have a split tree at the corner of Mecca Road in Pennsylvania. It's a big ash tree on the west side. If you look at it, it's almost two great big trees coming up side by side, and right in the middle of it, it's splitting. So at some point in the future, it's going to come down. Whether we want it to be on the nature's terms or our own terms, uh, I just say have it be done on our terms.
And not fall on the dog park ones.
I do have one estimate from Veterans Tree Service. It's twenty-six hundred dollars. If you'd like, I can look around for a few more quotes on that.
And that's what we usually file.
Yeah.
Do we have, what's the threshold for quotes?
We usually get at least two.
Two.
Regardless?
That's what you usually get.
Okay.
We've had, we've got three and bigger, I guess.
Yeah, yeah. Give back for me, give another quote, I can do that. In that, I'll just update you too. Uh, the park and the pool have gone along nicely. Cody's doing the plumbing work and getting the trees up to the baby pool. Jason from Rock Hard Coatings was here over the weekend. It's curing today, it'll be good to go tomorrow. Cody's making plans from Briggs Construction to come out and reinstall the control board, which we have in place. And so I think, uh, all things being said, we'll have water in it and operational barring anything unforeseen, uh, by the twenty-fourth. So we're on track.
And Kim has confirmed it is eleven o'clock is the time, so...
Yes, yes.
Well, I, I'm guessing we'll meet maybe at the entrance to the park and kind of do a lap around, drop the kids off at the park, and then take the dogs over to the dog park?
I don't know. Is the jamboree parade at eleven?
Yeah, they're not doing, they, they're not doing the parade?
Right.
But they're, yeah, so...
Because they usually start like at nine in the morning.
Exactly. But she confirmed it with Zach today that it's eleven. So I've got, um, several food trucks coming, and I've reached out to the vet place and the humane shelter to see if they want to take part. Sometimes they do, like male trimming and stuff. They're going to open the dog park in January.
What is this?
April twenty-fourth.
Okay. Yeah, I, I, I need to put this in the calendar.
Yeah. Hey, it's kind of good business now.
Food trucks.
April twenty-fourth, at what time?
Eleven.
I have a sign that made it. A reflective sign for right there by the gate. Rock Hill Dog Park.
Nice.
I know. They brought it over. They said they, we can put it up.
Scott Pet and Coris Place.
If you don't care.
Scott Pet and Coris Place are doing banners, are going to do banners, don't they?
So they're not doing a, you told, is that the same day that the Little Leagues?
Yeah.
But they're not doing a...
They're not doing the parade from the firehouse.
Okay. Anything else, Jeff?
No, ma'am. What's she got a question for?
No, we were going to talk about the stormwater project.
I don't know where that, where we at with storm, wow. Randy, go through your normal stuff, then we'll get to that.
Okay. Um, so you've got claims there. My last overpayment, which was the one, we got that final payment made, um, in the amount of one eighty-seven ninety-fourty-seven. That was just on this last claim cycle here, so I do have that out there. And then our end of month claims, if there's anything on there, it's three fifty-nine, three twenty-five sixty-one for claims.
I'll make a motion to make a claim.
I'll serve those if you...
All approved?
Aye.
All in favor?
I definitely make a motion to approve the grant from the community foundation.
Yeah, I've got this.
There's that sub, yes.
Yeah.
Oh, shoot.
The, I do have one.
Nobody cares, fine, nurse. I'm so used to signing our in.
Um, I do have one. It's a billing adjustment, but it's an amount of zero. Thought that it was a posting error from a credit card payment. Ended up, we got confirmed that it was posted actually correct, so there was still a change in the system, so it is a zero, but, um, if I could just get an approval on the adjust.
I make a motion. Maybe we'll see if it helps with the end of month.
I'll say.
All in favor?
Okay, and then I did copy all of the community foundations sent all the letters there for those distributions for availability of grants, if we would like to accept all those. Uh, we have the one for the pool endowment, which was mainly geared toward the baby pool. That is for two thousand three hundred forty-nine dollars and twenty-two cents, which is available on that. Uh, we've got the Hayes Family Pool Fund, that is, um, which I was going to mention to both Melissa and Liddy just being on the chalkboard. We can do Red Cross with that. So if we have, you know, any kids, students, adults...
I thought about that too, because if we have kids that are interested in taking the certification, it's actually for Red Cross, so maybe we could support their certification aspect.
Might be an option of lifeguarding too for some kids that maybe, uh, was, is it one seventy-five?
One eighty-five.
One eighty-five for non-students at ISU, but, because I was looking at it, because I was talking to my niece and a couple other kids and, um...
And she never got back to me, but Mandy said her daughter and some of their friends were interested. Maybe they were looking for somewhere to do, get their...
It's at the end of this month, so we need to probably...
And I gave her those dates, so, but I didn't, um, I was looking into as far as payment and stuff like that.
So what do you make of selection here? Select a combination or select reinvest all or reinvest none?
Well, if you want to, yeah, whether you want to reinvest or the availability to grant option there on each one of them, so...
I think we want to take the availability of it.
Yeah.
Well, you have a use for it, okay, but just don't jump down the hole yet. I mean, okay, so the first one...
We have a use for everything.
Well, maybe cool down, fuck, okay, we've got two hundred and forty-nine dollars bail. Now, what do you go with?
Mainly, baby pool is what it, the main purpose was intended. She said, you know, it can be anything pool related, but that was...
Time I think we have to look into a different type of water feature, because the ones we have now are...
The ones getting pretty, yeah.
And that would be...
Yeah.
All of that, all those funds could be used for that, so that's...
There's a lot of stuff to probably mention.
That's an option there. The Hayes one is the Red Cross, um, any kind of sun shading availability over there also passes for families that may or may not be able to...
Well, I guess what the point is, sure, there's always a use for it, but the other side of that is, if you don't spend all you possibly can every year, you reinvest it, down the road, there's more that gets built up. So I'm just saying, you know, save a little for the rainy day concept is...
Oh, no, I like to grow the economy.
But, uh, so, yeah, I mean, there's legitimate use for, okay...
We've talked about getting another table in Umbrella too, because that is a huge bit.
And I did mention to her when I was speaking about, I said that I thought about the tables. I know we got the tables in Umbrellas last year, but I said, you know, maybe we're talking into picnic tables and stuff like that. So that could be a use for that if you decide. Um, and then the last one that, um, area incorporated, that is for beautification in any way, and that can be park or pool. It's not necessarily just geared towards the pool or anywhere in town. It doesn't just have to be at the park either. So there's, um, some funds there that they could...
You could use that money for the pavilion, couldn't you? Pay for the pavilion?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, anything...
I thought that was supposed to be the estimate, though. How many gallons are you paying, you think, so it's good too?
So those are just there for you all to talk about, discuss, whatever you want to...
Well, we don't make a decision about fourteenth of May and all the masses we invest, so...
Right, yeah, I mean, if you guys are...
I make a motion, we take, what is the value?
Five seconds. All in favor?
I, I... I'll go this year, but I'm not sure I'd do it every year. Uh, yeah, aye. Uh, but, yeah, I mean, it is pretty logical to say...
And that is on all three of them is, all three of those grants.
So you receive those in separate accounts, funds?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's why I wanted to check on those to see what their intended purposes, you know, I wanted to make sure that money is utilized how it was intended to be set up, so. So we've got those. Nick, do you want me to go ahead of the resolutions?
They're your resolutions.
You did them for me. So we do have, we're making way on some of these resolutions, and then we'll get all this money transferred. It is kind of a process, some of the money. We have to do, write a check basically out of a fund deposit in there, you know, and so, um, but we do have resolution twenty twenty-one dash zero five, and this one will be for the safety grant from last year's state, I kept money, um, just that we're equally covering our match money from electric wastewater and water funds. It's going to be a little over a thousand dollars in each one of those to cover about from twenty twenty. So if you are good with that resolution that Nick has prepared on funding that, on the match money?
Make a motion?
I will make a motion.
Do I, I don't say it to the council, please. You guys put money next year if you want to do it.
Oh, well, I already started.
And...
Just a second, Pat?
She got it, right?
Oh, sorry. Do I have a motion?
She had, she would have got that.
Second?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then the other resolution is twenty twenty-one dash zero six. And this is the one that I received the information, we talked a little bit, and as Park was just explaining on the stormwater, um, the stormwater board, when they met and then think that, Steve Walts had sent a report by email to me that knowing that money moved from the stormwater construction to the stormwater operating, so that would leave zero money. Is this the one, did you, this is the one we talked about, reinvesting to go to general funding, or not?
No, that was, um, the ones from Howard Avenue, going to general, then go to South Market.
Okay, we're still working on some of the other ones.
Based on what the, I can't remember, I got used car salesman said?
Okay, that's, yeah. Steve.
Sorry.
So, okay, so this one will just go from the stormwater construction operating.
Just stormwater operating, okay.
If that's what you...
Well, I'm not going to put it in one fund. How we use it is the next question, but, um, so I'll, we need a motion?
Yes, please.
Yeah, I'll move, we do that.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then the only other thing I have is, uh, Mr. Powers from the State Health Department contacts me frequently about fluoride. Is, I know we decided, you know, we did went through all the routine about not doing that anymore. They have a thousand dollar grant that would be, um, they would be willing to honor to us towards a new pump, which seemed to be part of our problem. The pump could cost up to twenty-five hundred dollars, and I told him that I would ask if that was something that we were interested in getting back into. I...
You're all, are you guys shaking inside over there? Oh, I see, we need to put that together.
I, I just, it's not anything, I need a motion on it, it was just a short discussion and he's...
Thanks for the information, Randy.
Contacted me several times on it, so I, I told him that, I said, all I can do is present. I, I don't think it's something that we want to get back into, being that it's been, what, a year ago, when, you know, that all changed and everything, so, um, and I don't think we, you know, sure can say we don't have any issues with our water, um, anyway.
No, you're not required to have it.
Yeah, it's just an additional thing. It seemed to cause a lot more, but they were trying to help out as far as the pump issue were to be, so I will get back to him and thank him for that, but we will pass for right now. That's all I got. Thank you.
Hi, this is Ben, do we see the response, the response back from input of service agreement? They adopted quite a bit of our things, but anything that's limited liability, they said they'd like to discuss with me or me and Jeff. So with your blessing, I'll reach out to their attorney and have a conversation if you would like. They seem to think that somehow those paragraphs benefit the town. I disagree, but, so I guess, you know, with your blessing, I'll reach out to them and at least have a conversation and...
Your blessing.
See where things go, but, um, yeah, the part about liable to each other for any indirect, incidental, consequential punitive, multiple exemplary damage or lost profits arising out of this relationship. So, I mean, literally anything that can happen, you guys want to be liable to each other, is what this language says. I don't even think a court would enforce that language, in all honesty, but, um, I guess I can talk to them about it if you guys are okay with that.
Kind of like signing a waiver. You're liable, you're liable, period.
Right. Um, but I can talk to their attorney if you guys are okay with them.
We're insured, they're insured.
Right.
Uh, stuff happens.
Right.
But our insurance should kind of run against that.
That was kind of my position in the whole fault process, is if it's our fault, it's our fault, our insurance covered, but if it's their fault, they should cover it.
Right.
And that's kind of my mindset as to it, and, but I can talk to their attorney and see what...
Okay. You attorneys like to talk.
Bill will allow us.
Bill will.
Well, as you know, I'm salary, you know, I don't get...
That's true, you don't get that here in town.
But I would imagine their attorney is not salary.
Oh, uh-oh, that could hurt our rates.
It could be a quick conversation.
Might be. He seemed to right when I talked to him last time, but those were the two things that came up, both sections on the limited liability. That's the stuff they were okay with, but...
Okay.
That is the main thing I was going to present to you guys, and we're working on some more resolutions. There were about six of them, we got two of them done, so there's about four left, but I'll have them done for the next meeting. Randy's working on the ordinances and things like that. We do still have open cases on those, um, one of them's still in jail.
I had a call from, uh, Bob Stewart from Marzuma, who's on the border, there it was. He's helping to clean up the forty-one junkyard place, and they have made progress, and they are continuing to do so. Apparently the previous occupant of that property is now a nursing home, so they're helping to take care of that and, and they are, he called me and asked about burning. I said, nothing but wood is allowed to be burnt, so, and giving suggestions on getting rid of the cardboard up at the recycling plant. So they are making progress there too.
I, I did get a couple dollar loose complaints the other day that I was going to talk with Randy about, and, uh, there's also a house on, uh, York Street there by the elementary school on the north side of the road. Somebody was complaining about the yard on it. Looks to me to be a abandoned house possibly. It's across the street from where they're doing the renovations on the house.
Oh, okay.
It's right across the street, but there's just a bunch of weeds and stuff, but, um, might be something to look at.
I think so.
But I just told them that I'm not the person that, they need to make complaints formally, not informally, so. But other than that, everything's going well. We have court dates, I don't know if you want to know specifics on court dates or anything like that.
I don't think so.
Um, we have a BCA meeting we're going to schedule in regards to the high school. I'm gonna talk to Randy about that.
Animal things?
The expansion for the high school and the animal stuff. Looked like Mr. Han are taking care of what he needed to on that, so we just need to set a date for a meeting on it.
So is the answer to people not clogging Michigan and El Now, half of them just park on High Street, or York Street and let their kids walk over to them?
They're not supposed to.
No, they are.
But it's really, it's not against the law either.
Yet. Is it safe?
It would be safer with sidewalks down from there that we've talked about for the last three years, but.
Well, where's that on our schedule, Jeff? Do we have any sidewalk plates or?
Sidewalk guy's kind of laid up right now.
Yeah.
Which one's that?
But we, we're talking about going.
The sidewalk.
On Shadlin where it's brick now, and then there's no sidewalk all the way back over to College or York.
Right.
Yeah, we've looked at putting one in there, and I think we could do it fairly easy. The gentleman that lives on the, I can't think of his name off the top.
On the alley?
Yeah, on the alley, right there at the corner of York on the west side.
That's Hubert.
I thought it was Beth Stupwer's son.
Hubert Newley.
That's it, that's it. I asked him about if we'd be able to put one through there, because I know he put a fence up along through there too, and he said, oh yeah, that'd be fine. So if we wanna do that, we can throw that on as a project.
But there's a section on Michigan too that's terrible.
Yeah.
And we're getting ready to take one down on College and Isabel, ahead of, just right across from the pool.
Oh.
Ahead of our community crossings grant. I got a quote on it, a breath says he thinks he can take it down, so.
We constantly yell at kids to get out of the middle of the street because of the sidewalks. But we also try to limit traffic through there, now buses go through there in the morning, and in the evening only one bus goes through there, so. It's not too much traffic, but it could be safer.
Yeah, if you want, maybe we have to draw something up on that.
If you get a complaint.
Those places, the reason why they're all buckled out, trees.
Oh, yeah.
If you get a complaint about shipping container from the driveway over off of Walnut. We think we've come up with that it'll fall under packing boxes. Lumber, trash, dirt, or other debris inside or outside of buildings visible from public streets for unreasonable periods causing detriment to neighboring properties.
Back up, there's a shipping container sitting somewhere in the driveway?
Yeah.
Oh, it's been there since January, well, what's it?
Is it one of those, it's not one of those storage containers?
I'm not allowed to look in it.
Oh, well, yeah, okay, that makes sense. Well.
And I stopped to talk to the people, just to talk. And I got yelled and cussed at because I'm harassing them, and.
Well, let's, let's pursue this.
It's just, so I, I told them I'd come back.
Is it a forty footer?
No, it's, it's a much smaller one. It's like one of those pods.
I'm gonna get one.
Oh, I might get one.
I know, that's what I'm thinking.
There's like eight hundred over you call from the pot company, I think, probably a half.
But this is not a pod, this looks like an old, had to fall off a ship someplace, but.
It is not allowed.
Well, yes, it is not allowed, you can't, just think of everybody's are doing, good lord.
No, except if the judge agrees with us on this description, because we don't have anything to say shipping containers.
Well, I guess it's, it's.
Well, okay, they're corraling up the unsightly, well, there's.
It's really depreciating the value of this property, which is the bad part about it.
Yes.
What about campers along the drive?
There is also an ordinance.
There's an ordinance against, the one that can't camp in town.
They can't be in the front or this, they can't be in the front yard. I think, did we decide if they didn't have anywhere in the back, they could be in the side yard, but you can't be living in them.
You can't live in them at all, you can't even, you can't even stay in them or not.
Power cord to it either, from house.
What about trailers parked on side streets?
Nothing against that, long as they're legally, legally licensed. Now, if they're not, they don't have valid license plates on it, then I can tag them and have them towed, as an abandoned motor, as a banned vehicle.
And have you gotten anywhere on the alleys?
Yeah, I'm still working on that.
You know, when you start looking, we've got more alleys than you might think.
We do.
They're everywhere.
You know, I've asked.
Remember I told you, I told you about the mail lady?
Yeah, yeah, I've asked Roger to give me a couple of those. A little bit of a.
Well, you have to go down May fourth.
Just you can talk about Michigan, Howard, that. It's hard telling.
I saw one the other day that I had never noticed before.
An alley?
Yeah. Dog and I walk along.
Well, a mail lady said she can't, they, they're making her park a certain way because they wouldn't change where their mailbox was supposed to be. Because they went through a deal where they had to move, they wanted them to move mailboxes, and they refused, and it's up a blind hill. So they just told her if they, if they block the alley and don't let her pull through the alley, then she's not delivering their mail.
And the postal office can do that.
Yeah.
Don't mess with the postal.
You either put the mailbox where they say so, or they don't deliver.
Right, and she, but she can't, she had to like completely rewrite because on, they blocked the alley and put up no trespassing and.
Is that between Stark and Harris?
Can't block that alley.
We've gone through that over for years, it's been going on.
Well, it's not their alley, they can't block.
They say it's a driveway, not an alley.
Yeah, and she told me and I said, well, okay, I said, I'll take pictures and like for Jeff and flood know where it's at. They came out and walked down the alley with their dogs, and I'm like.
Is that the one next to Hills, is that where it happened?
They just took a trailer down or something there in the last year, so.
Shoveling a bunch of stuff and burning it all the time, not wood. I don't know what it is, but.
So the question is being able to ask your opinion if that's our alley, or if it's private property. I think the only way that I can do it is to go look at the property deeds and see if there is an easement or whatever, right away for, I guess it'd be an easement, but the town.
Their car falls down it?
Right.
Is there a street sign at it?
No. Or is a stop sign closed or something that they put up there occasionally?
Is it the one that's by Hill's house?
Yes.
Yeah, just over the hill there from.
Yeah.
There, I was, since I've been here, I've been told that all these alleys don't have names, they already don't have names. Like all of them are named, I mean, they're not labeled at all, but you know, that's one that's, you know, maybe in question or.
We can also. Please, I can plow in this area, so.
Yeah, but I'm like, they always have names.
Well, they've got like.
Two places there.
Right.
They've got stuff blocked on Harris here, and then they used to have like a barn or a couple sheds, and they tore all those down or.
But it goes all the way through from one street to the next, that's not a right way.
But their house or.
But I wouldn't walk down that thing for nothing with that dog they've got on.
That, down here, which I don't think they have another drive to their house, it's just that alley. So they consider that their drive, and they block it and.
Well, actually, they're using the town's alley for the driveway.
If it's.
If the town has it on their inventory now or.
Well, the problem is on the.
That's been the argument.
They're pretty nasty about it.
It's been going on twenty years.
Twenty, yeah.
Seriously?
Yeah, I, I've heard the arguments for twenty years, even when I was on the sheriff's.
Let's name it the town's alley.
Right, so it needs to be resolved.
I don't get the big deal, I mean, nobody uses it anyway, so, I mean, as far as, why do they care?
I, I know, I don't, I don't know. But they're really aggressive about it.
So Nick, you think that's what I need to do, is just look at the property deeds?
Go to the plow.
Yeah, I could go to the plow office and tell them what you're looking for and where you're looking at, and they'll be able to give you something, they're, they're.
I mean, you know, we determine ownership. You over ingrate it, throw a little rock down it, she'd be thrilled, you know, we paved our alley so you have a better job.
Well, as far as the issue on that though, even, even, I mean, assuming the alley appears on the deed as existing, even if they've had it blocked for fifty years, it's still an alley, you can adversely possess municipal property, so.
I don't know.
Exactly.
Which I'd argue in that case.
And they haven't had it continuously blocked, it's just.
I mean, they could block it for the next two hundred years and it's still an alley for the time of Rockyville.
And we could put on our, our.
Get the plow truck out, open it up.
But in order to send them a letter, tell them to knock it off, we probably ought to know if it's.
Right.
Exactly.
Okay.
Pick it up and go to the R I Y, any old business? Anybody? Any new business?
So Jeff, what do you wanna talk about, that water study?
Yeah, I'd send you guys an email that I received from Dr. Walts and Storm Board.
Well, I was talking about the water loss, you're talking about.
Oh, the water loss.
Well, we have both two issues there.
Yeah, 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 so the water loss, when we met with M E Simpson, the recommendation was to go ahead and make sure that we recalibrated the flow meters at the pump house. And we're gonna go ahead and, I think we were gonna go ahead and do that, and then have them do the testing when they were gonna be down this way. So that's, that's step one. Step two beyond that is really just kind of drill down and figure out where in the world are we losing this water? And maybe we have to do a leak survey.
Well, we have two lines coming to town, right? You know, the age, one's over the other, I've heard this story before.
Was there anything to make us think it's not collapsed at some point?
Well, who knows, I mean, you, there's gotta be ways to isolate sections and test on things.
Kind of.
And it depends on the kind of pipe, right?
Yeah, so you did have the alliance come in there and they listened. The problem with that, you know, the pipe and the distance between being able to listen to it really affects how accurate it is when they try to listen for a leak.
Now, they come to town, they go to the water tower, right, how's it work, I don't know how this works.
How, what works?
Well, the mains come to town, do they go to the water tower?
No, they go to the system, and so they tie them to the system, and the water towers are just like a big, so they pump, then they fill up all the mains in town, and then, then it fills up the tank. So there's not a direct line to the water tower.
Okay.
So once it gets to town, it's just tied into the, to the water system.
Could you not use a dividing line to work it where it's really strong?
I mean, there's a good possibility, and like Cody has talked about it, I think Jeff's aware that, you know, we don't have people with pressure problems in town, typically.
I think we, I think we have poor pressure out there in the north end, honestly, it just doesn't seem right.
Well, I know the apartments say they have really, but that's when.
We have problems with the tower level.
Yeah.
So that's what made us think that that line coming in, because you wouldn't really see that pressure being, you know, as coming in from the source, you're not gonna see that pressure problems there, but you're saying there's pressure problems.
I've had people complain, I never really paid much attention, but then I started, started paying more attention, I think there's, this seems weak, I haven't got a bucket to test, I should, this.
Mine's not, my pressure isn't very.
Mine's, oh, mine's good.
I've never had the issues, but actually, speaking of that, Shane just said tonight, but our shop needs to know, something's up with the pressure. I mean, we haven't noticed it before, so maybe it's a problem.
How do you go about trying to figure out where you might have a big loss at?
So, so Jeff met with M E Simpson, which is, that's what they do, so they listen for things, so they have correlators, so they'll go out into zones and they'll put these things out there and they'll listen. And they try to narrow it down and. I don't know how they pick one section, typically when you do an audit, you do the whole system, and then you go from there. But I don't know, I wasn't there for that, what their recommendation was. You know, like the first thing that we always did, and that's why we put those new meters in there, so we start there first to make sure that we're accurate coming out, which I think we still were, because those meters.
I think we dropped, we dropped seventy was about.
Yeah, from the old.
We, we dropped twenty million from one year to the next on our loss, just because we changed the meters, we think.
Yeah.
So M E Simpson explained to me that even though you have factory meters, they're calibrated under factory conditions. And if you have turns, if you have bends in the pipe at your pump house, where you're pumping the water out, that's gonna affect the calibration. So we dial into calibration, we see what that does, he says that he's seen as much of a twenty percent difference between factory calibration and actual calibration. So that could knock it down a little bit more. But other than that, I think we're gonna have to look at some kind of audit to try to isolate and figure out where we're losing it, because it's. About fifty, about fifty million a year. It's, it was seventy the year before.
I think they're in percentage, but it's very high.
It's, yeah, it was like twenty-three percent, I think the.
Fifteen is a threshold.
Fifteen is a threshold, so we've gotta find a few more percentage points, but, you know, it's, it's not running out of streets.
That's what I was gonna say.
We're not really noticing any wet spots, the only thing that, that the guys can figure is it's a leak that's somehow getting into field tile or storm water, and it's not coming out through the surface.
Would that affect everybody's, or where everybody's located, their stormwater expenses if they're, if it's based on water use?
If it's water use, well, that wouldn't show up on their side because it would be on our side.
Before the year.
Yeah.
Well, and because they're farming out there, could something, could somebody like cut a field tone?
Yeah, it could be, it could be go anywhere, I mean, that's just a ton of water.
It's a ton of water before it does show up.
Right, it's taking a drip path somewhere.
So that kind of says that it could be possible.
Feel like it was in the basement at my old house on Maple Drive.
So you see any ponds or anything around the house?
Cody's been walking through woods, he's been walking through fields, you know, trying to look for this thing.
There ought to be a better way to find it.
Well, anyway, okay, I won't drag you out, but.
So, you know, if, if push comes to shove and we have to do a full-scale water survey, those, those are pretty pricey, obviously, but.
Well, we should live here.
Yeah, we wanna, we wanna follow the steps.
Then Roger's gonna get back to the storm water?
Well, I haven't given him the go to do that yet, because it's still kind of a thing between you and the storm board as far as what you wanna do.
It clearly said it was our decision.
Well, I thought so.
You're paying for it, so.
Well, I forwarded that email, and I don't know.
What's the question, I say we just make a motion and have Roger do the design.
Well, my suggestion would be to communicate with the storm board, and I've told them the same thing, that, that you guys kind of need to get together and get our ducks in a row, I guess.
Well, we've asked that they come and they declined.
Well, there's a fair enough, I'm trying to, anybody, they did come twice over the last couple of years.
Well, and Jeff spoke into them, and they met with Dr. Walts twice, which.
So.
You know, I, I. You guys pay my salary, but I kinda gotta.
Right, you gotta.
Try to build a little consensus there. I don't know.
Well, I don't care who does it, as long as it's the cheapest, you know, cost. Looking out for the town. We have, what, twenty thousand from what you found best so far, I don't know how much that can carry over to the, we did a hydrology, what's the word, hydrology or hydrologic study a few years back, I don't know, I'm sure it's around here somewhere, the whole town, don't know how much that's useful for that particular project, but probably some good stuff there. I don't, I don't know, stretch points done so far from twenty thousand.
They said not all that much.
I think all of that is just the other design, you know, planning.
Yeah.
Was the, advising anybody on it, and that's, I was gonna scan, send those to you, but I just wanted to do a dig in on the heads up on that, so.
Well.
I guess I'd just point out with Roger, you can have a bid, it's gonna be what it's gonna cost versus a estimate of what it's gonna cost with changes.
With a lot of changes. I told you kind of earlier, just that we might have a charter, please.
They're gonna come down when they're around Tyro, over there.
I didn't know if that was directed at you or me, or the email saying move forward, drafting.
Most of that survey and some of it underbrained in study, I mean, and that, I don't know about the dating of it, so it's, we're hitting, you know, two years, it's dated, I don't know whether that changes anything or not, I just wanted you to have those dates, so.
Well, well, as far as storm water port, I mean, who makes the decision here on this?
Well, I mean, if they're asking for town funds to fund it, you guys have to say as to whether you're gonna use your funds to fund it or not.
Well, they're offering, I mean, I know they have the authority to issue bonds, I mean, do they?
Well, if they're gonna fund it entirely themselves, they could.
Well, and that's kind of what I feel needs to be worked out between the two organizations, because I think both are gonna have skin in it.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, normally it'd be a meeting of the minds, and you guys would work together and accomplish whatever's the best for the town.
There you go. Okay.
But I don't know if they feel adamantly about using their, their company or.
Well, we're only hearing from one member, I think we need to hear from the other members as well.
Who is on that board now, Kevin and Cows and, who else?
Norm.
Norm? Well, we need to have a joint session, I like that.
It does kind of need a meeting of the minds there though, in my opinion.
Well, we should make the best effort, definitely, and, and.
But you guys do have somebody that's on contract with you that does those type of things, so, and that's new, newly done.
Yes.
Some of the stormwater predicts that, so.
Would, would you like for me to reach out and see if we can schedule a joint session?
Sure, workshop, love workshops, like the name.
Call it a, you wanna make it a public meeting?
Well, they're, that workshop's a public meeting, it's just gonna be about one thing, just normal, I agree, by once here.
Sort of call it workshop, public.
Better bring up extra chairs.
Bring a shovel.
We can do that, I'll reach out. We can do that, I'll reach out and.
Did you say it was on every site, Kevin, or?
Kevin, Norm, Steve.
So it's a three-person board?
Do you anticipate that one being a lengthy conversation?
I don't really.
Or would it be the next meeting, I mean, invite those board members to a portion of the next meeting and do that, since it's a public meeting, it's whatever you guys prefer, but I'm just, you know, if that's your discussion, is we want to work together on this, but.
It shouldn't be that long of a conversation, I wouldn't think.
Well, I don't think so. It should.
Some people.
Yeah, it's totally up to you guys, I'm just saying, I know.
Well, that's things they're passionate about.
I'm fine with that, too, I like workshops, though.
That's your guys' decision.
You guys want to do that, it's fine. Makes it more efficient, it all one.
Let's have it at three in the evening, you can have it on the agenda, and invite them.
The next meeting on the nineteenth.
Yes. And I, I would like them all to be available, possibly, or at least.
Well, it makes sense, or, you know, is there three on there?
Yeah.